All right. Good morning. Today is May 17, 2022, Tuesday, 9:00 AM, here in the Human Resource and Development Department Conference Room. We are at our Board of Supervisors meeting. We will start today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Please continue to keep Ukraine in our thoughts and prayers. Today's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Supervisor Shucklian.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. First, our agenda is our Board of Supervisors matters, and we will begin today's Board of Supervisors matters with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few items that I wanted to go over today. I want to highlight, there's going to be a reception for the California Transportation Commission this week on Thursday in Fresno at Fresno State honoring Commissioner Egan, who's actually from Fresno, and she was made Chair of the California Transportation Commission. So quite an achievement for her, and we will be attending that in my capacity as Chairman of the Tulare County Association of Governments. We appreciate her and her advocacy for the Valley and also for the continuing widening of Highway 99. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention was I wanted to congratulate all graduates. This is the graduate season from various levels, and I know that there's a lot of functions and families with children, relatives, et cetera, that are having graduations in their families. So congratulations to all graduates. My sister-in-law graduates from Fresno State with a master's in communication on Friday, so pretty exciting for for her, and I'm really proud of her. She's now outeducated myself, so I'll just hang tight with my bachelor's degree, and she's just smarter than me. I'll have to acknowledge that, but at least that's what the degree says, right? That's all I have, Mr. Chair, that I wanted to highlight.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Vanderpoel. Supervisor Shucklian.
And where did you say she was graduating from?
Fresno State.
Right? Cool. All right. All right. This week, last week, I just want to highlight a few things. I participated in mock interviews with Kira Bixler. She is Visalia Central Central Valley teen, and she'll be competing in the Miss California Outstanding Teen later this month. Wish her luck. She's an incredible young lady. Last Wednesday, I just want to highlight, I had a a call with Senator Caballero scheduled as part of my position as Chair of the CSAC Government and Finance and Accountability Committee, and they canceled for the third time in as many scheduled meetings right before. That evening, I presented a certificate to the 2021 Employee of the Year for Cuyahoga Delta Hospital, and that was Chaplain Mark Wilson, and that was a little special because I used to work at Cuyahoga, and Mark was actually a patient at rehab where I worked. He had a horrific cycling accident, hit a rock up on in Yokal, and is just an amazing man, and came back and now spends his time at Cuyahoga helping other people. On Saturday, I presented, last week, we had presented a proclamation to the resource families, foster families throughout Tulare County. They had a picnic on Saturday. It was nice. Everybody was back together and all the kids, so I re-presented that. And then tonight, I will be attending the Mount Whitney High School FFA banquet. We have our Homeless Task Force meeting later this week, also an Airborne meeting and a San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting.
Thank you. All right, we move over to Vice Chair Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. Several things to go over. Last week, Wednesday through Friday, was the San Joaquin Valley Regional Policy Council Conference up in Clovis called "The Road Ahead." The pun was intended anyway to talk about transportation, especially the completion of State Route 99. There were great breakout sessions regarding funding, again, transportation, also housing, some of the things that have come down from the state regarding housing, accessory dwelling units, et cetera. So those are really good. Especially want to give another congratulations to Ted Smalley, our Executive Director of Tulare County Association of Governments, for receiving the Daryl Hildebrand Award at the at the ceremony, and those were for his efforts, his great efforts, really on behalf of Tulare County and the whole San Joaquin Valley in planning. He's a, he's just a master at collaboration and being able to to look for funding everywhere and put those, put things together to make things happen for this, for this valley. So congratulations to him. On Saturday, went out to the Porterville Fair. They have a great thing called the the Junior Livestock Auction Bid for the Kid, and was able to do some bidding on on pigs and goats and sheep, and stayed away from the cattle. They were kind of too much, but the, the prices were going really well for the kids. There were a few less animals than they had over the last year, and so the prices were up a bit, but just great kids watching the students make their presentations and come out and thank you after you would would purchase the animals, especially the involved parents that were in the crowd. It was, it was a wonderful crowd out there, and just the community of Porterville and the surrounding communities really come out to support these, these students. So that's a great event, and there was no exception this year. Later that day, I ran by and visited Cody Ridenhour. He had just graduated with his master's degree in school counseling, but also recognized him on behalf of the county for his service in the Coast Guard and his continued service to all of our veterans through the Porterville College Veterans Resource Center. So really proud of Cody in achieving that master's degree and for all that he's done. Yesterday, we had our Tulare County Association of Governors and Tulare County Transportation Authority meeting. Wednesday, tomorrow night, I'll be speaking at the Porterville Veterans Hall. The Exchange Club is doing a dedication of the Freedom Shrine, which is a collection of our founding documents of the United States, and I was so impressed when they did that at Porterville Military Academy. They asked me to speak there and really touched by that. They asked me to speak again at this one, and we will be bringing a bringing this before the Board of Supervisors for them to present a Freedom Shrine here at in the Tulare County facilities. Thursday, the 19th is, I'm sure the Chair will touch on this, the State of the County out at Monies Grove, and he's asked me to do the welcome and introduce the band and to give the invocation. I'm happy to do that, looking forward to it. And later that evening, I am going to do a Town Hall in Porterville at the Veterans Building at 6:00, joined by the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department, be the first one that we've done in the city of Porterville proper, so looking forward to seeing if people are going to turn out and how that's going to go, but looking forward to it. And then on Friday is the Sierra View Foundation Board Meeting. We are currently raising money for mobile nurses stations at at Sierra View District Hospital. So that's always a good one as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So good morning to Tulare County. Last week, I had the opportunity to speak to our supervisory academy graduates. I want to commend our staff who've decided to and have interest in advancing their leadership through these workshops. It means a great deal to the county that you've chosen to work alongside your peers and to advance the county family. Thank you to Lupi and her staff for putting these together. The fruit of your labor is our greatest harvest, and that goes out to all of our county employees. Again, the fruit of your labor is our greatest harvest and and really making sure that when you take these courses and workshops that, again, you're advancing in your career. Our Tulare County Regional Transportation Agency meeting was held yesterday. We held a public hearing on our proposed 2022 fare and service changes. We also discussed transit safety and security on our buses and at each of our stations and shelters. And so how can we partner with our cities as well as other local entities to make sure that our lighting is great, to make sure that we do have really security at each of our sides, given the fact that there has been an increase in crime recently. This week, I have a Mineral King Association meeting, a stakeholder review meeting regarding the West Goshen Safe Drinking Water Project, a hashtag lead graduation for our county's youth. And then also want to share that this week, like my colleague mentioned, is a State of the County event being hosted by the United Way of Tulare County. So I want to thank United Way and the Community Cares Coalition for your tremendous work on this endeavor. Also want to thank the amazing sponsors and partners who will be there to hear the health of the county. I'm excited to share the good news about our county to those who will be in attendance on Thursday. I will then be sharing that same address to the county at next week's board meeting as well. So looking forward to that and lots of great things ahead. With that, we are going to move to item two on the agenda, and that is to recognize Julie Allen for her 28 years of dedicated service to the Tulare County LAFCO Commission, and that will be presented by Vice Chair Townsend.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Julie, why don't you come up to the, to the podium up there while I while I talk about you for a minute? I'll say good things, I promise. And then we'll have, I'll read this, this presentation to you, and then maybe you can have some comments if you'd like, and we'll get a picture together and but I just wanted to say that LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission, that's a, that's one that very few people probably even know what that means. I struggle with it still today, even though I'm the Vice Chair of that commission now. As an architect, I worked for some engineers coming up through the ranks, and I had to appear before the LAFCO Commission a few times, and I always thought, who is this group of people, and why are they telling me what I can do and what I can't do? And so now, and I always thought, this is terrible, and now I'm the Vice Chair of that, and I've come to realize what the importance of that is in the in sort of the, the I guess planned growth of the county and the cities within the county. You came at it with a totally different perspective, growing up with people around you who who had worked in planning and a much greater understanding of that. And because of that, I think it's given you a passion for it that you've shared with our commission, and and you served, according to our records, you've served for 28 years in one form or another on LAFCO with with eight years as an alternate public member and 20 years as the public member. And that's an amazing achievement. You know, even if you're getting paid, that's an amazing achievement, but as a volunteer, that's really a big achievement to do that. We thank you so much. You know, the LAFCO Commission is not a division of the county, we have, but we have two members, Supervisor Vanderpoel and myself, that serve on that commission along with two city members and then the public member, which has been yourself for this many years. And so we can't tell you enough how much we appreciate that, and also you expressed to me that you would be willing to serve in any capacity down the road to help out with county matters, and so we appreciate it. So I have this, this plaque that I like to, a beautiful plaque, I'd like to present to you right after your comments, presented to Julie Allen and appreciation of your 28 years of dedicated service to Tulare County LAFCO Commission, serving as alternate public member from 1994 to 2002 and a public member from 2002 to 2022. Thank you, Julie. Would you like to say a few words?
I would.
You would.
When have you ever known me
Exactly.
to bypass the opportunity in front of a microphone
Never.
to talk about what's on my mind. Exactly. Pete would say never, and he's right. And Supervisor Townsend is also right. I did grow up in a household. My father was an architect as well. He was Chair of our Planning Commission, and I remember vividly the day he came home and talked at the dinner table about the passage of this wow new piece of state legislation, Cortezy-Knox. He was particularly interested specifically because it did give us the first set of tools for managing urban growth. And of course, the other side of that is the preservation of ag land and open space, which is what we think a lot about in this particular county. So it has been my great pleasure and privilege, and I'm so proud to have served on this particular commission during this particular time. We have accomplished together a great deal with our staff, our intrepid, and I can't say enough about the quality of our staff. I know they're right behind me and eyes are boring into my back, which is just fine. I want them to hear every word of it. And this is, as you point out, over a very long period of time, 28 years. And over that period of time, I have to say that our commission, which I have perhaps in a more private context characterized as that really nerdy thing where the rubber hits the road, where the rubber hits the road in particular as to who gets what tax money and where growth goes and where business goes. It is truly one of those very important and foundational pieces of our local governance. In any case, over my 28 years, I think there are some, some things that we can point to with considerable pride. Actually, over 40 years, not quite that old, but we have a very good data set that shows us that over those 40 years, while our population has grown, has doubled, excuse me, not just grown, population has grown. Areas of our cities not, not doubled. That's a good thing. We're all in the business of trying to provide services in a very efficient way. And these days, it's cutting down on those greenhouse gases and making more fiscally responsible choices with respect to transportation and transit, which is what you've just been talking about. So over those 40 years, we can, we can point to, we're going in the right direction. Over about 10 years ago, we also were recognized statewide for having pioneered some negotiations for providing some particular services to a particular disadvantaged community in this county. And that in some ways was the inspiration for a new set of regulations, and I understand we're not, we're always great fans of new regs. Nevertheless, that particular effort in this county earned our commission, Best Commission of the Year at the CalAFCO Annual Conference. That was pretty cool. Tulare County had not been recognized for a while. You know, when we go to the state conferences and we're up there against Los Angeles and San Francisco, sometimes it's kind of hard to be seen. But we have definitely been seen in certain of these areas. Another area was in the construction of Sigma, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. I was serving on the statewide board, the CalAFCO Board, at the time that we had some considerable input into that particular piece of legislation. I'm very grateful that we had that opportunity, and again, I'm very proud of the work that we've done. And so I say, looking ahead, and I look ahead also with pride. Looking ahead, Sigma is going to provide the single greatest challenge to our continued growth and prosperity and how we as a community come together to deal with the social, economic, and fiscal effects of Sigma. We'll have everything to do with where we are in 20 years. I intend to be around and participate in that in other ways. So I thank you very much for the opportunity to serve. I look forward to the next opportunity to serve, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Julie. Let's have you come on up here, and we'll have a picture with the board.
Mr. Chair, if I could just real quick, I just want to publicly acknowledge and thank Julie for the work that she's done on LAFCO. I've been on the commission for six years and have had the opportunity to work with her and her dedication and diligence. I mean, she was a trainer for new commissioners throughout the state at the annual conference and really did a great job. And I will tell you to many of you who aren't familiar with LAFCO, it may seem like a very mundane topic, and it can be interesting, foreign, strange at times, but I do want to say that it is something that is so important to what we do, and it truly does affect every single city in this county, and affects the county, it affects special districts. So it's a very important role in this county, and Julie's had a tremendous impact, and that is very much appreciated, and I look forward to working with her again in the future in various different capacities, and I appreciate her willingness to serve. Thanks.
All right. I'd also like to share just briefly, although I didn't really get to know you too well, although my year on LAFCO when I first started, but just to be able to see you and your presence in LAFCO meetings, very articulate, very well spoken, outspoken, but also just making sure that your heart was centered in the work that you did. I know that when I went to that LAFCO conference with you out in Sacramento, everyone was left and right, Julie, 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 Julie. And so you were the star at LAFCO when I was there at that conference, and so again, continued great work and success on your years and road ahead. All right. Our next item on the agenda is a presentation and proclamation recognizing May 15 through 21, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Tulare County, and Vice Chair will lead that as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, you know, I think we've always known, you know, whenever we needed emergency medical services, you know, we've known the importance of it. However, this last couple of years has just really emphasized that. I think it's on, on everybody's mind. I noticed that emergency medical service workers are added to prayer lists where we used to, you know, we, you know, you'd say the military, you'd say the, the police, you say the fire, now you're adding, you know, emergency medical services and 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 medical workers across the board. So this is really, really important, and it's, it is great that we can take a minute to recognize all emergency medical service workers, and we have here this morning, we have Karen Elliott, our Public Health Director with us. We have Annette Burgos, our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Manager. We also have representatives from American Ambulance, Imperial Ambulance, Livestar Ambulance, the City of Dyneuba, Exeter District Ambulance, City of Tulare, and I had to have, have them tell me what this is. It's TCCAD, Tulare County Consolidated Ambulance Dispatch. So we're thankful that all of you are here with us this morning to receive this. And if you, if you'd all like to kind of crowd up around in here, and I will read this proclamation just up here in front of there, and Karen, you can start off. Come on up. Oops.
Again, thank you, Vice Chair Townsend. That was very nice, and thank you, Chair and the board, for allowing us to recognize and appreciate the Emergency Medical Services Partners. These are individuals that decide to show up to work and have to respond to households who are really having a bad day. And when they do this, they have to keep their cool and composure, and this is their everyday life. And then in the past two years with the pandemic, it's even been extended beyond that in terms of when we all shut down, again, these are people who could not. They had to respond to households and to situations where we were still learning about COVID, understanding that they're going out there using their PPE, but not knowing if coming home, are they exposing their families to something, but they still decided to show up and do the work. And then when the vaccines came out, they were the partners with us that, again, unknown in terms of being the people in case anybody had reactions, so they were at every vaccine event in terms of helping us out and making sure that everybody was safe, and if anybody wasn't, taking care of them. And so again, being that person to bring the calm to everybody. And then I will also say that they have stepped up in terms of vaccine administration. We did finally receive a lot more vaccines and had to get more out into the events. These are the partners that chose to administer the vaccines. They have been the people that we count on for our homebound individuals in terms of when we can't, they can't get to an event, and they would show up and they would give them their vaccination, always needed two, unless it was Johnson and Johnson, and so would then in three or four weeks show up again and do that. So these are people that, you know, have just been an amazing partner and been so involved in all of the COVID response, and we definitely appreciate them. And so we're so happy that we can recognize them today for everything they do, because I don't think people recognize it's not just driving around in an ambulance and showing up at a scene and going to the hospital. It's, it's above and beyond that. And then I was going to introduce Annette, who's our Emergency Preparedness Manager, to say a few words.
Good morning. Thank you, board. Thank you for allowing me to come up and recognize this amazing group. Like Karen said, they have been with us from day one throughout the COVID response, from providing education to our non-medical transports on infection prevention measures, working with us at the alternate care site, Porterville Developmental Center, when we needed assistance there, working inside the hospitals during our surge crisis. They have been pretty much the rock behind all of the things that we are doing as far as COVID response has been going. No challenge has been unmet for them. They go above and beyond on a daily basis, in addition to what they normally do, like Karen said, providing response for, you know, life-threatening emergencies on a daily basis. You often also see them out at different community events, providing just education to our community. So I can't say enough thank yous to this group. They definitely deserve more than a week for all of the hard work and dedication and unwavering commitment that they've shown to Tulare County residents. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Annette.
I know we usually say remarks after we've taken a picture, but I actually want to thank someone who is in this room that saved my life back in 2019. I had actually been, was walking my dog and fell and was unconscious for about 10, 15 minutes. And the first person that I noticed as I woke up going into the ambulance was Dustin Espino here, who's been recently promoted, right? What's your new title? Battalion Chief. And so, and I just remember telling him, hey, I got a meeting at 6:00. I got a meeting. And he was like, no, you're not going to your meeting. You are going to the hospital. And so again, thank you so much for that lifesaving moment that you provided there in Rosie. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I will read this proclamation, and then we'll have a little photo op with everybody after that. So this proclamation recognizing May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Tulare County, whereas Emergency Medical Services, or EMS, is a vital public service that provides lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and engages in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuous education that enhances their lifesaving skills. And whereas every day across our county EMS professionals sacrifice precious time with their loved ones, working long hours to provide emergency medical services to people they have never met before, often operating in the midst of trauma and heartbreak. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the EMS system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators. emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas Emergency Medical Services provided immediate assistance during the COVID-19 pandemic, continues services in an unfamiliar response environment and provides vaccination and testing to meet the urgent needs of the community in underserved neighborhoods. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize May 15 through the 21st, 2022 as Emergency Medical Services Week. We call upon and encourage all citizens, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Tulare County to observe this week and recognize the daily heroism of our EMS professionals at all levels. And we express our gratitude for their efforts to keep us healthy and safe. May 17, 2022, and this is signed by Supervisor McCary, Supervisor Vanderpool, Supervisor Shackleyan, Chair Valero and Vice Chair Townsend. And if you could, let's have a round of applause. And if you, all of you representatives could come on up here and we'll have a picture with the board. Don't be shy. We could have a big group up there. I know.
Thank you, everyone. Item four on our agenda is a presentation by David Wetmore with Cap Carpe and Clay regarding an update on federal legislation. And he will be joining us via Zoom from Washington DC.
David, are you there?
Good morning Supervisor. I'm here.
All right. We can hear you.
Excellent. As I said, I have face for radio, so if we go to the video feed, I'm fine. I'll just, I'll start here in the interest of time. Thank you for letting me be with you. It's nice to be back with you. I know we share the common goal of having in-person meetings at some point in the not-too-distant future. And I'm happy to provide this quick update on four topics, COVID-19. Because since your meeting here in March of 2020, it has overshadowed everything. I'll talk about the federal budget and corporations, I'll talk about the bipartisan infrastructure law and finally touch on forest policy. So COVID, as I said, it's, it's kind of overshadowed everything. You recall you were here that last week before everything shut down. And since then, you know, Congress has worked mightily to try and put in place legislative relief. And most recently, the most significant piece of that was the American Rescue Plan, a $1.5 trillion, $1.9 trillion bill. But important to you and county governments and local governments in Tulare Counties, that bill provided direct federal assistance to all local governments. The previous law, the CARES Act, limited that direct assistance to jurisdictions with more than 500,000 people. So you just missed the cut as a result of what people say was arbitrary headline. You were left to your own devices and relying on the state for assistance, which can be a challenge at times. So under ARPA, Tulare County is slated to receive, I think, around $91 million. And that's going to be paid in two tranches. You receive the first tranche last June of 2021. And under the law, the second tranche will be paid 12 months after the first. So September, June, you'll be receiving that next payment. As you know, ARPA identified categories for eligible spending. But the challenge has been making sure that your decisions are in compliance with federal laws intent. And that required implementation of a rule to help guide that. And it became clear very quickly that the Treasury Department didn't really understand how counties and local governments worked. This was new in their wheelhouse. And so they went through to their credit, a series of FAQ sessions and responsive documents back and forth, but it delayed the release of the final rule. And that it become effective this past April. So now you have clear guidelines from which you can proceed and make your decisions there. And you now have until the end of December 2024 to allocate the funds and the end of December 2026 for the final spendout. Speaking of funding, I'll talk quickly about the federal budget. Unlike the state, which is fairly regimented on June, July timeframe, the fiscal years here in Washington DC just kind of blend together and the dates don't necessarily matter anymore. FY, we are currently in fiscal year 22. This fiscal year started last October 1st. Funding bills were signed into law on March 15th, so five and a half months after the start of the fiscal year. And that creates uncertainty for you in terms of your general fund budget and the programs that rely on federal grants and aid. But it also creates uncertainty in terms of services that are delivered through KDA programs to your residents. This delay in the bill was for two specific reasons. Number one, there was no budget agreement on the discretionary spending caps. And number two, there are disagreements over policy provisions that make their way into the funding debates. The other wrinkle in this is the funding bills require 60 votes, 60 votes in the Senate. So that's kind of split 50/50. So you can do the math pretty quickly and you can see it requires a lot of effort to get to that threshold. So with these circumstances in place, Congress just relied on continuing resolutions to keep the government open and avoid shutdowns. And then they did reach an agreement on a $1.5 trillion discretionary bill, funding bill, that increased both defense and non-defense spending. And I will tell you, the program's important to the county and residents there and the services they receive were treated very favorably. It's just one example, the pill program, payment loop taxes, that was fully funded, which is very important to your economy, to your budget and others in the valley. Also, for the first time in more than a decade, Congress included community project requests formerly called earmarks in this omnibus funding bill. And with the support of David Valdano and Senators Feinstein, via the county's request on behalf of earmark, Public Utilities District was, was awarded funding for two projects. A store relief project for $1.28 million and a well treatment project for $1.75 million. In addition to that, TCAG's Farm to Market Roads project was also funded. I know that's one of the board. You talked about regularly during your Washington DC advocacy trips. Where are we today? The administration released its budget. Congress is holding oversight hearings. They're now collecting and reviewing requests for earmarks, but the same circumstances are in place. There's no agreement on the budget, on budget caps, and there always are policy disagreements. It's a pivotal election year, so no one should be surprised if the funding bill discussions get put into a lame-deck session or even beyond. A switch to the bipartisan infrastructure law? Because infrastructure had been a repeated talking point during your many Washington DC meetings and briefings that you had out there with federal agencies and with the legislators. It has been on the shortlist for actions since 2016, but they could never get across the finish line. So last November, a bipartisan law was signed into place by President Biden. That provides five years of funding for federal service transportation programs and it increased funding levels. And these funds will flow through both formula grant programs. And these are the funding streams that TCAG receives and the county receives directly from the state. And then through competitive grant programs. All told, this law is about $1 billion through 2026, including $550 billion in new spending. And of the new spending, $430 billion will flow through the existing formula programs. $120 billion would be via competitive grants. One area I'll call out for specific attention, it's important to the ballot, is the Bureau of Reclamation will receive $8.3 billion over this program, which adjusts the drought and other water infrastructure needs across the country. This is a significant increase in funding for the bureau. It's basically doubling their budget each year for the next five years. So a lot of resources will be in that way. And I want to caution everyone, this is a five-year bill. So if projects aren't ready now, they can be ready as we go through the lifespan of this bill. Now there, I like to think that there is two ways to receive funding. First is the formulas. And that's going to happen. That's in the law. And the state has received supercharged amounts for the transportation programs. And then there's the competitive grant programs. There's two kinds of competitive grant programs. There are the ones that are currently existence and then the new ones created under the law. So the administration has worked pretty hard to get the funding out the door for existing programs, whether it's formula or competitive. And they've pushed those out the door. What we're waiting for now is to see the guidance on the new competitive grant programs. So for example, the law created a new competitive program for the county to apply for bridge funding, for your, your bridges in need of repair. We need to wait to see what criteria are going to be for that before that county would be able to apply for any of those funds. Same for the broadband programs and others. Reclamation is going to receive $1.15 billion for water storage, groundwater storage and advanced projects in western reclamation states. But again, the program funding announcement is scheduled for some time later this year. So we're all tuned in and watching that closely. Let me switch over quickly to an issue that I know is front and center always with you and it has been during all of your advocacy trips, is dealing with forest issues. It's been an overriding concern for you there and across the West. An integral to this, I think, has been your unique voice in advocacy on behalf of the Gensacoyas. And that has become a talking point with the state delegation during previous trips and currently. And this concern is now central to a legislative plan to be put together by Leader Kevin McCarthy and Congressman Scott Peters from San Diego, Democrat, and Bruce Westerman, who is the lead Republican on the House National Resources Committee, among others. He also happens to be a forester. And this group is working to finalize drafting new legislation specifically targeting the Gensacoyas. And the goal is to make it easier to protect these magnificent trees and, and free up the federal agencies and local community partners, like the county, to work collaboratively to manage the forest through prescribed management tools. So that could be a control burns, tree thinning and other tools. And currently, as you know, whether there's a drought or no drought, the laws and regulations need to be streamlined. Locally, you, the federal land managers, you know what needs to be done. But achieving it is cumbersome, expensive and subject to litigation. And so meanwhile, in this last, you know, first, we saw these trees burning. So this bill is targeting those 73 groves. And hopefully it will not turn into a national debate. It will be seen as a streamlined pilot project, which I know is something the county is talking about previously, to empower local collaboration to get after these, these, these needs and be able to rely on the category of conclusions under current law to allow the work to proceed quickly. Now I know Supervisor Townsend and staff, you were with Kevin McCarthy and others during that time. They use that to listen and learn and they've taken it apart. I was talking to your staff and with the community staff yesterday. And they're going through their notes and they're redrafting the legislation. And the goal is to have it introduced hopefully sometime in June. So with that, let me just close simply by saying it's a pleasure, it's an honor to work with the county. And I just want to thank you for the wonderful staff that you have who helped us do our work. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much, David Wetmore. I will open it up to my colleagues to see if they have any questions or comments.
Mr. Chair, I do just have one. You know, hey, David, great to hear your voice. I know we're not seeing you in person and like you said earlier, hopefully that will be coming soon. I wanted to ask you real quick about community funding projects for this upcoming year. I know that Congressman Valdano's field rep mentioned yesterday that the list has been submitted and I guess finalized for what the 15 projects are that the congressman's going to be supporting and putting forward this year. Do you have any indication as to what those projects are or if any from Tulare County are represented on that list?
Supervisor, thanks for the question. I understand we have a bit of an echo, so I'm going to apologize. And hopefully we can resolve it. I have not seen that list. In fact, under the House rules, the members are supposed to post on their websites, their requested lists. And so we're waiting to see if his list is not yet been posted. And the offices tend to wait until they're posted before they start telling folks what is on it. But we're following it closely and I will share that with you. I know that staff there has been close contact with him. But we've also provided briefings for Senator Pedia and Senator Feinstein's staff. And their schedule is, is lacking and the headlines in the Senate are perhaps the end of May. So we're waiting to look at those three. But you know, Mr. Valdano is a terrific partner in all of these things.
I'm just trying to get a sneak peek, Dave. That's all.
I know. You know something? There's a whole industry of people back here trying to get a sneak peek. So we're doing our best.
Thanks for all you do, Dave. You do a great job for us back in DC.
Thank you so much.
Awesome. We're going to transition over to Vice Chair Townsend.
All right. David, hi Supervisor Townsend here. Thanks for coming on today. And thanks for bringing up the Save Our Sequoias legislation and that, that trip and that listening session. Do you have any sense, you mentioned it's going to be introduced in June. Do you have any sense what it's going to look like on the, on the Senate side? And also where the president is on this type of legislation?
Well, as you know, the Senator Feinstein has a bill that she introduced with Senator Danes and Senator Medea, the Wildfire Emergency Act. And in my meetings with the staff, and I know in Tulare County, staff comments back to Senator Feinstein, we collectively, we made clear there needs to be greater focus on the Gensacoya. I know that the Feinstein staff is aware of this discussion and they're following it. And I think she's been a very helpful partner in trying to promote common sense forest management legislation. So I would anticipate at the appropriate time that she would want to be supportive of that. In terms of the White House, I think something playing in your favor, I would love to say is the new Fire Service Forest Service Chief, Randy Moore, you know, was from California. He knows his issues. I'm very, very close. And so I would anticipate that they would be supportive. The challenge here Supervisor is always that, in one of my comments, I mentioned how this is so narrowly targeted. They have to thread the needle on NEPA and some of these other sort of high-profile environmental And some of these other sort of high-profile environmental issues that prompt the litigation, they're working very closely on a bipartisan basis to do that. And so my thought is if this bill can remain targeted, the administration would, would see the need to be supportive. They haven't commented yet. They've been fairly forthcoming in reviewing other bills during House and committee, House and Senate markups and committee hearings. To be as supportive as possible and provide the technical assistance that's needed to make the bills workable. Under the Forest Service is always challenged with resources. But they're also challenged with the litigation environment. What makes it very difficult for them to do some of the things that they see as needing to be done. That's kind of a long answer, but I, I am hopeful. You know, somebody sent me offline, they said, you know, we've got a lot of red meat issues, we Republicans and they Democrats can talk about. And we don't want this to be a red meat issue, we want this to be a success. And so I take that as a sign.
Yeah, you know, thanks David for that answer. One of the things I was really impressed with at the meeting was around the board, all of the people that were there representing various agencies. And, and they all had that sense of urgency. And so I totally agree that keeping it focused is going to be the, the biggest thing. Because what, the, the one common denominator that everyone had is everyone mentioned the, the somewhere between 15 and, and 19% loss of, of the world's mature giant redwoods in the last couple of years. And so to keep that focus out in front of all the legislators, I think will be, will be the most advantageous. And I was really impressed with what happened at the meeting and just hope that that will continue as we, as we go through the effort. Thanks again, David.
You, you bet, and I'm looking forward to receiving the final bill text in the next, hopefully, a couple of weeks. And I know that you have a separate point with those books too, so hopefully we can all review it together and, and make sure that's what needs to be done.
David, I have a quick question, something that you didn't touch on, but of importance, and that is internet. And I know that the Biden administration just launched a 45 billion internet for all initiative to bring affordable, reliable, high-speed internet to everyone in America. Do you know kind of the specifics on that or also working with the state? Because I know here in the Central Valley, we lack that resource. And so just wanting to know the available resources so that we, we can tap into those and provide that here in the county of Tulare.
It's a very good question, I will put that into the category of a new set of programs in the infrastructure law dealing with broadband. And this first one, and it was announced, I believe, last week. These are funds available through the utilities, the providers, the internet service providers. Provide discounted access to the internet in needy communities. And that guidance came out, I believe, last week. And so I can pull that and look further and, and make sure that you have that information to see where, how the county is going to benefit from that. I believe the conduit for those funds, as you indicate, is the, is states and, and the utilities, the service providers.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much for that.
And, and just to extend that, there are several discrete new competitive grant programs in the broadband space. Through the ICC and another federal agency, NTIA, which is a Department of Commerce. And we are waiting to see, like I say, these are the new programs, they have to stay in the month. So we're still waiting to see the announcement of what these programs could look like. And generally what happens is the administration will put out a notice of, of program. And then invite comments. And then based on the comment period, they would then structure the program and make the appropriate announcements.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, colleagues? No? Okay, so we thank you, David, for the presentation and for keeping us updated on all things federal legislation.
Well, thank you so much, Supervisor, thank you all of you, have a good rest of your day. And I look forward to staying in touch and working further with you.
And thank you. All right, we are going to move on to our public comment section. And so, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the board at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public is invited to make comments when the item comes up for board consideration. Any person addressing the board will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name for the record. Do we have anyone here in chambers wishing to speak at this time?
Chair, I have a comment card from Marilyn Malloy.
Okay, all right, if you can come up to the podium.
Thank you for turning it on, I was like paying attention, I was like, oh, you have to turn this thing on. Good morning Supervisors, my name is Marilyn Malloy, I'm a resident of Tulare County. And I'm just coming to you guys today because I'm a little concerned. We're two years into the COVID pandemic. And I think that the residents of Tulare County deserve some answers. So I'm asking one of two things. I would like for, and I understand that you guys can't reply to me during public comment as you stated. So this is what I would like, is I would like to have an open dialogue. Obviously not right now, so I'm asking for something to be added onto the agenda for the next meeting. What I would like is a draft resolution ending Tulare County's state of emergency. I don't believe we are currently, I don't think we're in a state of emergency anymore. Of course, that is just my opinion. COVID-19, I mean, we're two years into this, the soonest that a pandemic can end, the state of emergency needs to be lifted. And I think we're at the, the point where we can go ahead and end that state of emergency. We have access to, you know, the vaccine or to therapeutics. You know, whatever fits the needs of the people. If you guys are not willing to pass a resolution ending the state of emergency, then I think that you guys need to provide proof to the residents of Tulare County that COVID has been isolated. So that's what I'm asking, either pass a resolution ending the state of emergency or provide proof to the residents of Tulare County that COVID has been isolated. And I would like that added on to the next agenda for next week, thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. I will share that prior to going on any agenda, we do encourage you to talk with staff. So after today, we will have staff report back and have that conversation to answer any of those things that you may, that you brought up before the board. Thank you. All right, do we have any other comments in the chamber?
Yes, Reed. Reed Shanky with RMA.
So quickly, good morning Reed Shanky, your Resource Management Agency Director. Been to a lot of your meetings, but haven't done public comments yet, so new one for me today. Fifty-two weeks in a year and so many good causes out there, it's inevitable that there's some overlap in this. And hopefully our friends with EMS won't mind. But May 15th through 21st is also National Public Works Week. Last year, we had a dozen or so folks come in with the hard hats and the vests. Talked to them this year and they said, you know what, we'd rather be out fixing the road. So in lieu of that, next best thing, Ross Miller is here. He, yes, he said, I don't mind not fixing the roads today, give me a break. But he is currently serving as our local chapter president of the American Public Works Association. So I'd like to let him present you with this poster here. All right, as Reed said, I am Ross Miller. I am the local chapter president for the American Public Works Association. Our chapter, and apologies, I want to pull back my notes real quick. Has about 300 active members of about 30,000 Public Works members throughout the country. Our chapter spawns as far south as Kern County, as far north as Stanislaw County. We include even Indio County, so it's quite a large area. And the theme of this year's Public Works Week is ready and resilient. It is to recognize that within all Public Works employees is a superhero. And it's to note that all Public Works employees have to be ready to switch from their usual public work duties to serving as a first responder in the event of a natural disaster like a fire or flood at a moment's notice. And in honor of Public Works Week as well, our chapter of the, will be hosting, along with the local chapter of American Society of Civil Engineers, our first in-person meeting since March of 2020. So that is really exciting, though it's Thursday. We are also hosting an event Friday night at the Clovis Farmers Market. Thanks to our member chapter, the City of Clovis, as well as some of the other local engineering firms. We are putting on a display, it will include some heavy equipment and other things. If people want to come out, see it, you know, have kids sit on a front loader or something. It will all be there at the Clovis Farmers Market and we expect it to be a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, let's take a picture.
All right, cool.
Yeah, I know that's, because it's behind you, I figured, I just grabbed it.
All right. Do we have anyone in the room wishing to speak during public comment at this time? Any others? We're going to turn it over to phone and Zoom, do we have any?
Mr. Chair, we have no public comments.
Okay, that being said, we are going to move to our consent calendar, number six through 18. These items are routine and usually approved by one motion. Before action by the board, the chair will ask members, board members and the public if they wish to remove items from the consent calendar for separate consideration. So at this time, do I have any colleagues wishing to remove any items? No, anyone from the public?
No.
Okay, so with that, I bring it back to the board for motion.
Approval?
All right, I have, all right, so I have a motion by Supervisor Shucklian, second by Supervisor Vanderpoel, roll call please.
Supervisor Nakari is absent, Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes for zero.
All right, we have a few timed, untimed items. And we are going to take up the first untimed item, and that is 19. Request from the Resource Management Agency to approve option A or option B regarding the award contract for construction of the 2022 Road Repair and Accountability, Accountability Act Project 1.
Thank you again, good morning Reed Shanky with the Resource Management Agency. This item is to request a major road rehab project, the award of a major road rehab project to the low bidder, Don Berry Construction. The project is our 2022 RRAA or our RARAR project, which is an SB1 funded project. Consists of 11 locations, 16 miles, five distinct intersections. Typically, these awards go through on consent, but we did want to make your board aware of current bidding climate and some of the impacts related or that are, that we see the impacts from the global economy. Engineers estimate, which is typically, and I'm proud to say we come in within, within about 5% of the bids. So we're generally pretty close with these, was prepared in January, we estimated it at 7.6 million dollars. The bids came in in April, between one to two and a half million dollars over the estimate, so significantly over. Low bid is 8.6, so just about $1 million over our engineer's estimate. Do we have the slide available, Linda? So these increase in bids are due primarily due to the spike in crude oil prices. So we're all aware, we've seen it at the pump, went way up right at the beginning of the year there. Asphalt jobs, our number one cost driver is crude oil prices. It goes directly into the asphalt and then the cost of diesel for the vehicles that are hauling it. If we've got the chart. If not. And your eyes are fantastic. Okay, you've got it, there you go. Perfect. Yep, so you can see here, the, the blue line is crude oil prices, those are the numbers you hear on the news, MSN or CNBC, whatever. Price per barrel, it's kind of hovered in the 70 to eight, or no, sorry, in the 40 to $50, $60 range. It did drop at the beginning or the summer, last summer, down into the $20 range. And now we're up into the $100 per barrel range. The orange line is our unit price on asphalt. And you can see it tracks pretty closely what that is. For a long time, we were paying 65, $70 per ton for asphalt. It dropped down a little bit below that during that low time last summer. And then quick big spike there right at the end. We highlighted a couple of the recent jobs, the 2018 RARAR, that was our first SB1 project way back at the beginning of the SB1 program. And then you'll recall that the board authorized the advance of $10 million of measure our local program money. Those projects were the farm-to-market 2.0 projects. And we, you can see effectively, we, we kind of bought the dip there. I think that was an excellent decision on the behalf of your board. TCAG allowed us to do that and we got a fantastic bang for the buck there. Specifically, the, the 2.0 Project 1 cost us about $340,000 per mile. You compare that to the project we're talking about today, which is about $530, $30,000 per mile. So it's 150% increase from about a year and a half ago to where we are today. So back to the topic of awarding this projects, we do have adequate reserve funds in our road fund account to pay for this. Unexpected increase, it won't negatively impact other programmed projects, so we won't have to cut anywhere else to be able to do this project. We do have an oil index clause in our contract, which basically means that if prices go up or down, we're paying based off of that index. So if price, if oil prices, crude oil prices were to substantially drop, we would see a cost savings. But conversely, if they go up, we would, we would pay the contractor that. So that allows the contractor some kind of advanced knowledge to be able to predict and bid on his jobs more safely. However, because of the nature of these jobs, they go pretty quickly once awarded. I don't expect any major fluctuations in oil prices, so I think that this is probably what the, roughly the price that we're going to be seeing. In closing, really the reason that we wanted to bring this to you was just awareness of what's going on in the industry. We did get seven bids, I think that reflects a hungry appetite for work out there, so there is a competitive market for jobs. It's really just this oil price that is driving things at this point. It's, it's my recommendation that we do go ahead and award the project, go with option A. As stated, we've got the funds in the, in the balance to do this and they're needed, it's needed work out there. So happy to answer any questions or entertain any discussion.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question, thanks for bringing this and I appreciate the awareness that you're trying to promote. You know, we are experiencing much higher costs, that means less road gets done, roadwork gets done. We know there's tremendous need out there. I don't necessarily know that this is necessarily a bad thing when you're comparing it to the benefit that we saw with our first round. I think if you level it all out, it, it means that we're pretty close to what we would have projected a few years back. But you still hate to see any money come away from roadwork that needs to be done due to higher costs. But we also don't know when or if these costs are coming down. So, you know, my thought is like yours, let's just get the work done.
Thank you, any other? Okay, thank you for your work on this. All right, so. All right. So at this time, we will bring it to the board for any additional questions, none being the do we have any from the public, Melinda?
No public comments.
Okay. So with that being said, bring in back.
Move approval?
All right. So we have a motion on the floor.
Which option?
Which option? All right.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So there's been a motion on the floor to adopt option A by Shucklian, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Macari is absent. Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklin.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. Awesome. Item 20, request from the Sheriff's Department to introduce an uncodified ordinance adopting a military equipment use policy for the Tulare County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning to the board, Assistant CEO and Chief County Counsel. I'm Assistant Sheriff, yes, with Tulare County. So with regard to this, this Assembly Bill 481 passed early, earlier this year. And it was for all law enforcement agencies in the state to accomplish. And what we have to do is, is create a bill or not, excuse me, not a bill, but create a policy, which we've done and we released ahead of time prior to this meeting within 30 days regarding military equipment use or what's been perceived by the state as military equipment that's used by law enforcement, specifically in our case for Tulare County. Having said that, we've also collaborated with our county council and for an uncodified ordinance. So it'll work hand in hand. What happens is in general is we are justifying along with the governing board where you are now involved in our processes for funding or utilization of our existing equipment such as pepper ball, 40 millimeter less lethal devices, our existing Bearcat, that's an armored rescue vehicle. Along with various other items that's been released publicly as well, prior to this meeting today. For the public to be able to analyze the policy that's been created along with our existing equipment. With that said, this does fall in line with our strategic plan for safety and security in the county also. And there is no net county cost for this involvement with regard to the policy, the ordinance and our existing equipment supply. With that, I trust that everyone received a copy of the policy and equipment list. We've also made it simple through linkage on our external agency website for anyone from the public to view. As well as most other mid to large size agencies as well. So we had to get this done. I know later than this month. So that's where we're at today with it.
Any questions or comments from colleagues?
We'll get a tour.
Yeah.
Of the equipment.
Yeah, usually, and, and you know, I just, I don't want to be loquacious, but I'd just like to say most of our, we don't have anything to hide. We're extremely transparent and most of our equipment, as far as I'm aware, I've seen it a lot of public events on display. Plus we bring our equipment and discuss it with children, high schoolers and adults at various events and schools. So everything that we have on hand, one form or another, for the most part, has gone before the board with justification. We have stringent audits with our equipment. And we have high accountability with its use and we're trying to, with our, you know, Sheriff Boudreaux, we're going to be at or above industry standards at all times with the county for their public safety.
Mr. Chair, and I was just going to say, this equipment isn't for a parade. This equipment is necessary for the maintenance of public safety. I appreciate the transparency that this law requires, but personally I find it unnecessary. Your number one mandate is to keep this public safe. It doesn't matter what equipment you need to do so. You need to be able to keep the public safe. I'm fully supportive of the Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Boudreaux's goal to be at or above industry standard because that's what our Tulare County public deserves. This is just something that's creating work for no reason.
Thank you.
Off of that same thing, that's what my thoughts were above and beyond what we need. Sure. Like you said, we're out and about in the community, letting the community know, but sometimes I wonder if the bad guys need to know everything that you do have to combat them. So but I am in support of this. And I know, I believe I Celia PD just did this last night at their city council meeting. So it's going around.
Yes.
And ditto with what all my colleagues have mentioned already.
Thank you.
All right. With that, are there any public comments? Either in the chambers or via Zoom or call?
No public comments.
All right. I will bring it back to the board for motion.
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Vice Chair Townsend. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Macari is absent. Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklin.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. Thank you. Item 21 is a request from the county administrative office to appoint Thomas W., is it Dan? Dane. Okay. Dane as the county hearing officer. All right.
Mr. Chair, I don't really have much to add, except Mr. Dane is here, so he can speak to his qualifications as to being the hearing officer. And he works for the county as of yesterday. So we're very excited that he's a part of the team. This is in keeping with the modifications that the board recently made the ordinance. So Mr. Dan, if you want to come up and kind of tell us about yourself and your experience here.
Hopefully I'm here to make your job a little bit easier, take a lighten your load a little bit with the hearing that are happening. But I've been a litigator for essentially 20 years, a little over. I've done, there's hardly any aspect of the law that I haven't touched over that time. I've been in federal state courts. I've been and participated in arbitrations, mediations and everything in between. So it's my goal to make sure that everybody that comes through the administrative hearing process feels that they've gone through and had the due process. They've had adequate time and experience to be able to express themselves and have their their positions heard and that win, lose or draw, that they come away feeling that, that this the process was fair and adequate and that they were able to, you know, represent themselves. So happy to field any questions you may have. Hopefully you've got a little bit about, know a little bit about my background, but happy to field any questions.
Questions for staff. Typically, when we would have these series, it would be, you know, one of us chairing and then there would be additional staff members also a part. Is that going to continue or Mr. Dane just be handling all of it?
This, for, for this item, the CEO is requesting that the hearing officer sit in place of the board member on those hearings.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
Mr. Chair, and I would just say, I don't need to add any, make any comments or ask any questions. I just appreciate your approach to this position and your effort to bring fairness and be an advocate for the process. Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I was just going to kind of echo what Supervisor Vanderpoel just said. And, you know, when I learned that that was something that we do as supervisors and that we, that we take turns, I thought, well, that's, that's really interesting. And now that I've, now that I've served on one, yeah, I'm really glad you're here.
And I wanted to sit on one and I never got the opportunity to sit on one.
I know. Thank you for that. Thank you for sharing a little bit about your, about your background. It's great to meet you today.
All right. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say congratulations and welcome to the Tulare County family.
Thank you. Very excited.
All right. All right. With that.
I would move approval or?
Public?
I think so.
Do we have any?
We have no public comments.
Okay, thank you. With that, there has been a motion on the floor by Supervisor Shucklian.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor, Vice Chair Townsend. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Macari is absent. Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklin.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. Awesome. Thank you for bringing this forward. We will go to our last item on the agenda, and that is item 22. Board members may make a referral to staff to have a matter of business be considered for a future agenda item. Anyone? All right. Thank you. With that, I will conclude today's open session agenda. Counsel, is there a need for closed session?
No, Chair. Item A is off calendar, therefore there is no need for closed session.
All right. So thank you, counsel. Since there is no need for closed session, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending today's Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stay safe and press forward. Thank you.